Okay, I'm gonna call the September tenth, two thousand twenty-five, the Lompoc Planning Commission meeting open. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Bridge.
Present.
Commissioner Beverly.
Commissioner Cox.
Present.
Commissioner Hurd.
Present.
Okay, and then we will go ahead and open it up to oral communications. And then this is an opportunity to address items that are not on the agenda. We have no one standing, so we will go ahead and close oral communications and move on to the consent calendar. And then we'll need to move to make a motion to approve. I'll go ahead and motion to approve the consent calendar items. Okay, we'll go ahead and vote now. Okay, approved five zero. Now we will move on to public hearing item number one, Lompoc Permit Ready ADU, PRADU Program Review. Can we get a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman and members of the Commission. Tonight, we have the Planning Commission review of the schematic design package associated with the Lompoc Permit Ready ADU Program. This item previously came before you back in, I believe, July. It was just informational item. However, tonight is actual public hearings. We can get your feedback and anybody from the public that has feedback before we go to City Council. I'll introduce Randall Rumson to go over the schematic design package. And then we can get any of your comments and move forth.
Excellent.
Yep, right there. And here's a pointer if you'd like it.
I'll probably send a little bit. Congratulations. We do the planning commission. My name is Brady Russell. I'm with our design group at San Luis Obispo. And we've been working with our city, your city staff on developing a pre-approved ADU program. And I know you've had, I think you've met Rachel Hollander at least once, maybe a few times, as we discussed the log behind the process and some of the outreach and communication with the community. And this is the beginning of the results.
Start showing, I think I've showed you some floor plans. Usually they ask to just talk more quietly, so that's a great change. So I'm just gonna walk you through these. I'm really here to, to talk about it with you or the public, answer questions that you may have along the way. So I tend to start going and I'll be talking. Feel free to stop me and ask a question. It will not insult me, it will be much, probably more productive. Just so you guys understand our process, when our initial steps, which I think maybe Rachel outlined with you guys, is we do a bit of a survey of the community, look at different areas to try to identify two different things primarily. First of all, opportunities, meaning, you know, what size lots do you have? How are they developed? Most communities develop over periods in surges, basically, with the economy. And with each one of those, the lot configurations and where the placement of the houses are, the size of lots, things like that change, which result in different opportunities of open space for putting ADU in the backyard. Sometimes side yards typically in a backyard in our cases. I'm sure you could probably see some more newer developed places in the last decade or, you know, twenty years that probably hardly have a backyard at all. And compared to something done in the fifties or before that, that might have sixty feet deep back there. So we have to, our goal is to try to find things that work in all those situations so that we're covering as many opportunities as possible. On top of that, we also have a couple of garage conversion plans, and I'll talk about those when we get there. So if I can figure out how to navigate this thing, we'll see if we can step through our process here. And we had, so I think you've kind of seen the plans before. This is kind of a borderline wood bedroom to a studio, could have a door. It's kind of presented as a studio plan. This is a type of thing that really squeezes into the smallest of opportunities. We do have, you know, a little bit of kitchenette, a little bit of space out front. We've included a stack washer and dryer, which is kind of an optional amenity. If people want to put them in, that's great. We want to create the opportunity for it. You'll note here, this is kind of different than many of the other ones you're gonna see where we actually do an electric demand water heater on the outside of the building. All these are designed as all-electric based upon what we, the trends within the energy compliance documentation. So you'll, even when you see a tank water heater, it is designed for, to be in, to be electric. I'll step through these. Each of these we have, we've provided you with a section to give you an idea of the space. It's, you know, very, these are very efficient, they're straightforward. You're supposed to have, you know, eight-foot plates, flat ceiling. This is all about providing efficient, cost-efficient, cost-effective buildings for getting housing here. We've got a number of styles in there. As I said, we went around your community, looked at what styles would fit in with the neighborhood, with the original house. As you aren't sure where, state law would basically say if you don't have objective design standards, people can put, you know, whatever they buy off of Amazon in as an ADU, or wherever else they might, might get one. One of the advantages of this is your community gets to, to control the character of these buildings, that something that actually, it's not a modern box, it's something that fits within the neighborhood. And so because you're effectively giving this away for free, the applicant, you know, saves time because they've already been approved and saves the money, you have the advantage of saying, but also you have to build what we're giving you. And so that's kind of what this whole process is and why you guys are also a part of it, so that you can speak to these being appropriate in the community. So we've been, as you would imagine, California ranch style. We're in California, I think every community has California ranch in it. Provide you with some elevations here. I should speak at this time that materials and color are representative. Ideally, they are to match the primary residence. So while we're showing some green trim and board and bat siding, this is representing wood siding. It could just as well be a ship lap hardy siding as a board and bat. And the plans will dictate that they match the, the primary residence unless staff decides on a different path for that. A bit of a cottage style, this was interesting. You have a mix of cottage styles in your community. And from, actually even stuff that was influenced by storybook style. So we tried to find a middle ground that kind of had that type of detailing and left an opportunity to, to match what was there. Again, when you see things like a stone wingscott here, that may be appropriate in one location, it may not be in another, but the design overall starts meets that. And maybe they have a brick wing Scott, maybe they don't have any. And that would be what the, ultimately, the applicant would put in their place. And then sort of typical for every community, I think in our central coast here, is you're gonna find something that is Mediterranean or Spanish influenced. This is what we're providing for this. Again, these are, you know, at the end of the day, ADUs are efficient small boxes, so there's not a lot of ornamentation on them. But even with, even with this, your design guidelines required a certain amount of ornamentation on the entry, and that's been addressed in this case either through, through the porch or the tile work that's been incorporated in here. And I'll skip through these, we'll get to the, the next step up. A little more straightforward one bedroom, still small, five hundred square feet, fairly shallow, fits in most of your lots. In this particular one, we provide two opportunities for entries at the end or on the side. So while at the bottom there, it's showing a side, or it's showing a window, the intent is that can be converted to, it's a three-foot opening, so it can be framed either way. We engineer it so that you could just drop a door in there. So if your lot was such configured that it made more sense to go on the side than the end, we're able to do that. It's a good time to bring up another thing. You'll notice two sides of the plan do not really have many windows on them. And that's because state law requires an applicant to be able to put an ADU within four feet of the property line. Once you cross five feet, then you're in a situation where you have to worry about fire protection, and there's limited unprotected openings, and we have to have protected eaves. And so what we do is we reduce, we sort of design it that a corner fits in a corner of a property so that we can, that can be oriented in either, either way. And you basically end up being able to accommodate that four, four-foot setback without having any other modifications. Click through here, here's our section, I don't need to belabor this. Here's our, our California ranch version of this. More of the agrarian style, can ultimately be the Mediterranean, Spanish style here. We get a nice two-bedroom here. This one is really in response to a shallow lot, that we can still fit in a large two-bedroom unit at the back of something. My eyes aren't good enough to read that anymore, but this would be, you know, you're in the range of a fourteen foot, so you're talking about a thirty-foot, thirty-five-foot space in the back of your, your lot to make this work. And most, I mean, you know, if you haven't put a pool or something like that in the back of your property, this would probably work for most things built even up to, in the last couple of decades here. So it really provides a decent-sized place in a, in a small, efficient package. And here is it represented as, as I said, California ranch. And as I said, please, please stop me if I roll through things too quickly for you, or if you just want to point out some things that you clarified. Cottage agrarian, and again, the Mediterranean, one that would fit in just about any, any neighborhood, I would guess. We start getting into a little bit larger sizes here where we have, it's still, it's a two-bedroom, but this is a, you know, has, it's a pretty efficient two-bedroom, honestly, six hundred and fifty-six square feet. It's not huge, you'll note that we do have a side-by-side washer in here as opposed to a stack, little larger bathroom, but, you know, very standard ten-by-ten bedrooms, efficient design. This one goes back to providing an entry on either end or a side in an end. And not much else on that. I was gonna say, say some of these we, we might design for accessibility. I don't, sometimes these ones with the side-by-side are, but I don't see that that's an accessible, it might be a, a universal, but not, not actual full accessible in that design. Again, we have the California ranch. And to our Mediterranean. And these, we have, your city asked for two different garage conversions, and these are not standalone detached garages. These are taking existing garages and converting them to living spaces. We've got both a, a single-car and a double-car version of this. And they, these, when we, when we put these plans together, the, the concept is we're dealing with life, health, safety issues. This is not an exercise in architecture here. We're not, I'm not gonna show you elevations because it's the existing house. But the goal is, you still need to have an egress window on your bedroom, you still need to get the right amount of light and ventilation, we need to be able to enter and exit the building. So the, when we go through the actual building plans for these, they're, you know, they address those types of items. And we also have a one-bedroom which we configure, or one bedroom, one car whip, or in car garage whip, which would apply in, in two applications. Obviously, the standalone or just somebody has even an attached one-car garage. But we find that we're also, you know, have two- and three-car garages that there may be the opportunity to insert this into. And so you still have your three-car garage, you take one day, turn it into a studio, and you still have your two-car garage. Wouldn't work in my house, we keep filling our garages with stuff, but ultimately, if you wanted to fill it with your, your kid or your friends or rentals, that opportunity's gonna exist. And so we showed it here into a three-car garage, but it, it could go either way. It wasn't meant to exclusively apply to that. I think that is, and we've provided you just some sample color and material boards to show you, to, to make it clear to you that the intent is this works with any one of these materials. We designed it to create this opportunity, and the colors and materials that would apply would be tied into the, to the primary residence. Obviously, there's no, we don't want to dictate what that is, and there's no way for us to know what explicitly is out there. And that, from a graphics standpoint, is the, is the completeness of the presentation. I'm here to answer whatever questions you guys might have.
Is the water heater closet inside the footprint because of setback rules? Now, there's what if I want to eliminate the water heater closet and put a, instant electric on the side of the building?
You could do that with a, what we do is we run a, let's get to dictated by the energy compliance documents as to what you use. So we're gonna run basically what's gonna be the generic typical version of that. And if you were to come and say, hey, I want a different brand, I want to do this different unit, you, it would have the cost of having to rerun that with a local guy, which, you know, they're about two hundred bucks to have your, your energy compliance documentation rerun, and you could get it rerun to, to work with whatever that may be. And these are set up to be all-electric, so it'd have to be run as a, you'd probably end up having to be a gas one because what I found is all-electric demand, you saw me put that on the smallest unit where it makes sense, you can do that, you know, for a forty amp, two-twenty and be okay, but once you get up into a two-bedroom, they just take too much juice. So we do the, the other type.
So all these houses are designed for a hundred amps?
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So they're, it's a pretty big load for the two-bedroom version of that. But there are, but certainly there are options out there.
Okay, then how did you decide on maximum size? There's, what if we wanted eight hundred and fifty square foot? That's not in the plans?
That is not one of the choices here. We, it was, came through a number of, of ways. One is we started with, when we took the job, there was an RFP that went out and said, here's what the city wants. And then we go through and evaluate, help the city evaluate, hopefully say, well, how did you get there? Is this really what's right? What are your needs? And so part of that process is not only looking at the lots and seeing what, like I said, opportunities are there, but also what permits have already been applied for. We've had a few years of ADUs in the process, people have come and applied for ADUs. What is it that the market wants? And we start targeting what that looks like, too. So by the time you get up and do, hey, I want a twelve-hundred-square-foot one and push the limits, most of the people who choose to do that also have the space and the money to go hire an architect to do what, whatever they need.
And then each ADU has its own water meter as opposed to somebody upgrading the main house and sharing?
I, that is dictated by your public works, and that's not incorporated into our plans. The state will allow you to use the same water meter. And so most cities to, to limit costs do not require an additional water meter or an additional sewer connection.
And none of these are designed, if the structure was built underneath, in other words, these could never go on top of a garage, correct?
No. It is, and this comes up occasionally. The issue is, is that we have no way of knowing what's already there. So, you know, if you built your garage in the last ten years, I'd say, yeah, you're probably just fine. If it's nineteen seventies, there's no way we're gonna get that to, to work structurally. And we don't know what that is, so it's impossible to really give a generic answer.
And you want to keep everything generic?
It's got, we want it to apply to everywhere, sure.
And then, did you say the two-car garage conversion was meant only for attached garages, not standalone?
Oh, no. No, it could be attached or detached. We show it for an attached garage because that's a worst-case scenario.
I see.
You know, you've got a wall against the, the, the house that, you know, has no windows in it, and you've got to close it off. So there's, but it could certainly be detached, and I know there are a lot of those in your, your community.
And then for the covered porches, if that interferes with setbacks, do you have to build that covered porch since it's on the plan?
No, you do not.
You do not?
You do not. They are optional, they will be, they look prettier this way.
It's aesthetic, but it's not required.
But it is not a required thing. What is required by your design guidelines are a few elements on that porch. And as a professional, I'm gonna recommend, hey, you want some cover as you walk out in the rain and things like that. So we have details that match the style, that provide some eighteen-inch, two-foot covering out there, and present an identifiable entry and not just a, you know, a whole cut wall. So it still gets that presence, but doesn't impact the extra five or six feet of setback you might, you might have a problem with.
Okay. And then the plans that have the different entry options that also gave plans for porches on both options?
No, there's only a porch.
On the?
On the, however, it's the primary one of design, the others would have the option to add that, you want to call it a stoop, a little, little shed over it, the other entry element they could add on because it's an optional detail in the plans.
I see. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, actually, excuse me. Under this section, I believe this is open to here, it says fire sprinklers, notes, and it said, basically, if the home is, like, if the home already has a sprinkler system installed, the sprinkler system must be built in the ADU. Are there plans for sprinklers in this packet, or is that it's gonna be a separate?
That is a separate permit. State, you know, basic state law says that language, that if the home doesn't have it, the ADU doesn't have to have it, but if the home does, the ADU does. And the way residential fire sprinklers work is it's essentially a design-build type thing that you go to one guy, he gets the engineering, he picks up the permit, and he installs them. And it's through one business, they don't really, at the residential level, engineers don't really sell the service to have that done. So those aren't included in the plans, so it's just an additional thing.
Commissioner Bridge, did you have a question?
I did. On the three-car garage where it's for essentially one of the car portions, can that be, is that applicable to a standalone, single-car garage? I don't see a single-car garage.
It is not intended to just be inside a garage, it was to apply for?
So it's just more of a with example in that case here on your?
Right. This was kind of unique in your city, said, hey, we would like to be able to put them in three-car garages, too. So we went forward and said, let me show it to you in a three-car garage, so we're communicating that concept. But it could apply to detached or attached, you know, at just a single-car garage.
Okay. And the hot water heaters have to be included within that main portion, or can they be on the external of the structure?
They can be external to a structure if you enclose them in basically an insulated cabinet. It's not the typical, you know, eighty-dollar metal box you buy down at Hoady, but it actually has to be an insulated box to meet the energy compliance.
When it's a, say, a three-car garage attached to a house, can the existing doors be maintained?
You could not have an existing door maintained between the two units. That, that, these are effectively two different units and?
Would a double locked door, would a double locked door apply?
You could do a?
A double door?
You could do a fire-rated door, yeah, you could do it like you would do in a hotel, which are two fire-rated doors. Yes, I think something like that could be that. We don't design them for that, that would have to be something that would be approved by the building official on kind of a case-by-case basis.
And on the ones that you have that are water, are tankless, because it seems like you have either or, but you said they were?
Yeah, just a small one has the tankless.
Is that simply able to be switched out, or an alternative plan to be adjacent or parallel to this that shows a regular hot water heater without them having to then go back to an architect or do the energy-saving plans?
No, they're, basically, what's on the energy compliance documents are what you have to put in, or you have to have them rerun.
That's, but I'm asking a different question. We only have a tankless option.
On one of them, yes.
But can a option be made for a tanked plan so that each time, so our current condition is you've got maybe two houses on a block that'll probably be allowed until the electric maxes out. So at that point, you know, five percent of the houses can essentially do this without having to go do the plan. So it's not really equitable concept. Can I switch it and say, make it tanked?
Well, I mean, you're talking about switching to gas from electric, right?
No. No, I'm saying here you have a tankless water heater, and what I heard was that you can take your plans to have a tanked one, but then you must do a, energy plans again. And I'm suggesting that in the calculations, perhaps, that only five percent on the average block can have this concept until our electrics maxed out. Why would we go this route versus tanked? Or have both?
The?
Two plans.
Two plans, first of all, two plans is an option, it's if we're directed to do that and spend the budget on running, because it's just two energy compliance documents.
Exactly.
They're two hundred and fifty, two hundred bucks a piece, it's not?
Well, not to the average customer, it's?
But, I mean, yeah.
It's an iceberg service, so, you know.
So it, it's not a big thing one way or another, so if we're asked to do that, I'm sure we can provide that as, as, as something. I'm not sure the, the hypothesis that, that there's an energy difference there really comes in play, because when you get to those small, whether they're a small electric tank or small demands, the electric load gets much closer to each other so that it's not having as much an impact as it does when you get into the larger ones where you, the value of having a slow heat system that doesn't have to be on demand requires less electricity, so the tank actually makes sense in larger units because they don't draw as much. But to your suggestion that we could have either one?
I don't pretend to know every block's limitation with current loads already, so perhaps if there's three charging stations on this block right down over here, there are no more wires coming through. That's a real, real reality, so?
I'm sure there are places where that is, that is not something I'm aware of in your city. So that option does exist, and we could do that.
Um, I think, do the design standards here limit or allow control? Is the, the design requirements controllable? Do they, do they have to meet them, to what level, until the plans are approved or the ADU can be moved into? Conceptually, this is to what level? This is ten percent concept or a hundred percent concept on design?
As far as design goes, this is, this is the completion of the design. We'll be preparing the permit documents, which will be completely engineered all the way through. And there are not, there are options such as the porch built into those designs or the optional entries. But that is the limits of options which people can customize and change, with the exception of, you know, which roof material you're gonna use. You know, you're gonna use, if you're gonna use, these are all designed for a worst case. So you can use tile, you can use shingle, you can use, you know, asphalt, whatever. You could use hardy board and bat, you can use hardy lap siding, you could use stucco, whether or not you have? whether or not you have a wa- a, uh, like a stone or brick Wayne Scott. All those things are individual choices of the owner to what they would do. And that is sort of written into your ADU ordinance and, and how planning administers what the requirements of the ADU are. If it's, you must exactly match, or you, your original, the primary house, or, yeah, we split, that looks close enough. I know you can't find that same tile anymore, that's fine. Um, that, that is sort of, but dictated by your planning. Cool, yep.
The city gets four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is, once that's gone, is this program gone, or is this gonna be perpetuity? Or in five years, can the California Congress vote it out? What are you, what's your opinion on that?
I don't get residual income on these. So, uh, the way this works is, you've been paid to prepare these plans, and the city owns the plans. And you can do whatever the heck you want with them. Now, the limit of my liability as a professional stops at your city limits, but you guys can do whatever you want with them. At that point, I mean, I'll just finish the, the thought here, is, every three years, the code updates. And at that point, you're gonna have, we're, we're running this, the twenty-twenty-five code, which comes into, in effect in twenty-twenty-six. So it'll be good for three more years, and then at that point, the city will have to make the decision whether they wanna come back to us and spend the money to have these code updates, which are a few thousand dollars per plan, it's not a giant number. But they do need to do that to keep them in, in current compliance.
Maybe Greg could answer this. Once the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is gone, is the program over? Or, I mean, they could revive it five years from now, but as of right now, is it your opinion, once the four fifty's gone, program's over?
I, I guess I'm not really sure. I know there's a deadline in terms of this grant where we got the four hundred and fifty from, in terms of if, if we have to use it all up by that time, or if, i- if it's used up. I g- I guess I'm not really sure.
What's the timeline now?
Uh, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. That's when the grant invoices are due for the deadlines.
These plans, I, I don't know what of that money, my, my understanding of, I don't know the specifics on how your cities use the grant money, but cities in, in general, that is used to develop documents, develop plans, public outreach, things like that. Things that are one-time-use things. What is generated by doing that gets to be used for as long as you choose to use it. If I, if we use this money and actually part of our, 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 our contract is to produce handbooks that sort of help educate the community on how to use these things, that thing continues to be in use, it doesn't expire, and neither do these plans. So, now, if you're using the grant funding to subsidize permit costs or something like that, then it could, and I don't know whether you knew that or not.
I, I think one way to look at it is, the city has to use the funds for the establishment of what we're calling the program, but the plans continue on, not necessarily indefinitely, but at least through the next code update of twenty-twenty-seven. From my understanding, these plans, not only the conceptual, but the forthcoming building plans, which you are also going to be working with as well, are gonna be provided at no cost to the constituents? Okay, thank you.
If any other municipality has used this program to develop plans, can residents from Lompoc use their plans?
The answer's there, yes, but not on the expedited program that this is. So this is designed to be, I'm sorry for jumping in, but this is designed to be-
It's qualified, yes, as you know it.
It's designed to be more of a universal application to expedite all permitting and planning going into it. So this can be more easily effectuated by the constituents. So the minute we start looking at alterations that aren't within this body of plans, that's when suddenly we start removing that inherent nature of expediting this development. Which is also why I think it's a great point that you were bringing up, Brandon, about having essentially the universal flip option between gas or electric due to what we have in our local dynamics. So I think trying to make them more inclusive, as you suggest in that sense, does increase the universal application, which is what we're looking to do.
I'll, I'll add into that, that concept, there are, what you're talking about is whether the city will accept another jurisdiction's plans as equal to theirs. And that is totally a decision by, you know, by your city, by your building official. And I've had, I've had communities who just say, hey, I like those guys' plans that you, you know, R M, you made plans for this other city, you wanna use some just like that, but we need to adopt it for our city, because we have our own special things. At, at, and, which is a very expedited and be, much more reasonable process. I've also seen communities say, i- i- it happened in, uh, I believe in Tascadero, said, County of San Luis Obispo, we consider your plans equal. So if you approved them, we automatically approve them. And that's completely internal to that city to decide that's how they wanna, to handle that. So there's, I, I mean, I personally probably have about a hundred and twenty odd of these plans out there in the, in the state, so, and there's probably three or four hundred more out there. So there's a lot that you can consider.
Yeah, so this is, if we accept these plans and we go through with these, that's what expedites it. But you can bring Bulton's pre-approved pa- plans, but it's not gonna be as quickly, because it has to go through our staff and see if it meets our requirements.
Unless, as a city, we grant ex- approval of those plans as being permissible.
Correct.
Yeah, aren't we working on the program, not just the plans itself? Yeah, so, including that as an amendment to the program?
I'd be hesitant to, by default, include it, because we would have no eyes on what we're approving. I'd, I'd wanna wait until it's in and then approve it.
That's the slow roll to a no.
I, it's, I think it's a quick and easy yes once it's out there, but I'm hesitant to just-
You're likely to have so many better plans and options.
Then I would love to evaluate them.
But it's never gonna come back. This is it. This is it.
With regard, it has the, I mean, Greg, how, how would it be proposed back? Say, say Bulton comes up with some great ADU plans.
Well, carpenteria already has them.
Oh, okay, so, and I haven't seen carpenterias, but say, say there's these great plans, and we were not to automatically right now say that we accept them here? How, what system would the city go about in order to bring them in?
Well, I mean, I think we would have to look at them and determine if they're compatible with our city.
And that's essentially what I would at least want to do.
The project load is so huge, at this point, you're talking four years out, longer than the program is even gonna run-
Okay.
For a simple-
So the-
Lompoc's at the bottom, who's gonna do worse?
This program is for the development of plans that are universal to Lompoc. So that's what the program is, okay? And that's what we're using here, is we're developing these plans that can therefore be applied throughout the city.
Well, yeah, but they're all based on state standards at a minimum. They're all going through the state code check, which we run through right now anyways, because we don't even have a building inspector. So we might as well by de facto accept the state level and just catch up.
Well, you're saying not accept the state level, you're saying accept the plans of individual municipalities. The state level is what we have here.
No, I'm saying any municipality already accepted ahead of us has essentially ran full steam ahead with a building inspector, fully aligned with the state, not getting out of line. The only thing they add on top of it is design controls, which we wouldn't even have applicable concerns, because we wouldn't have a solving design where it's gotta look-
So are you saying we would have no design control? So for example, I haven't, I haven't seen carpenterias, but let's say carpenterias ADU that are pre-approved include one that is extremely large and likely not in tow with the standard footprint here as an ADU? And we would by default be accepting that with no control?
Well, you'd by default run into a building code issue where you'd be running into a state code where it's larger than the parcel allows.
Not larger than the parcel allows, larger than our character, so you're just maxing out.
It's a moot point.
Okay.
Because anything that runs ahead of us, we're just planning. And I'm saying, plan ahead. Let's get every municipality that saw your waste and, and spent the time with that four hundred and fifty K, and let's take advantage of all of their effort. That's a million-dollar-plus effort. How many did you say there were?
Well, I, just, we did carpenteria, I did carpenterias, they were talking about, um, we-
And they're gorgeous, aren't they?
What's that?
They're gorgeous, aren't they?
Oh, I, I, I hope all of our stuff's at least in the decent category. The one area you're gonna run into is, is, you talk from here to Bulton, there probably isn't a significant difference in climate, in soils, the things that the engineering kicks in. But if you like my stuff in, I don't know, out of Coachella or Palm Desert, entirely different structural requirements there, that, and environmental requirements that would, would really need to be redone for this, so there wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense to-
But that's a building code issue again.
Pardon?
That's a building code issue.
But we, we be going through some sort of building clarification on that if we're giving this preapproval on the plans here? Like, Greg, I'm sorry to throw this at you.
Yeah, well, um, yeah, introducing other plans that have been approved somewhere else, I mean, I would have to go through a whole, as a part of the review for the building permit, would have to have its own review. So, um, and, and those plans wouldn't be specific to Lompoc, like, such as the soils or whatnot that building usually looks at.
I love, see, I love your theory, Brandon, where you're going with it, but these are my concerns, is essentially that it just won't work here. I love, I wanna expedite too.
Again, the facts are, it's a building issue. It's not even within our purview.
But, but we are saying essentially that it's not a building issue, because, unless they generate, unless they take those plans from another city and then adopt them to the plans for our city. Because, again, that building issue, we're jumping over, because we're preapproving them under-
Let me just, let's step back here for a second. You like the idea of having a tanked version. That's because it causes simple pain onto the customer, the constituent, who's supposed to be taking advantage. And to some level, you believe my mathematical equation, that the block would be better advantaged to having that option. The requirement, if not, is they go and do the energy savings plans, and they pay for that, and they go through the, the, jumping through. That does not change if they bring in a plan that does not meet the requirements, because it has to adhere to building code, of which we are not a part of. And so I-
These plans are pre-approved by the building, so they don't need to go through building, correct?
Well, these ones are-
Not, not these, these are conceptual, sorry. The end-product plans will have already gone through buildings, so they don't need that approval at that point.
Yes, for, yeah.
That's the issue, is we are saying, uh, right here, we're only doing conceptual. But when building plans come through, we're saying that these building plans are pre-approved for Lompoc, which, if we bring in Palm Springs and we say they're pre-approved for Lompoc from Palm Springs, the building issue that you're saying, we've all said there, we've green-stamped it.
There's no property that's not gonna go through that soil process through the building code. All of them are gonna have to have a building code review, but fair enough. If we wanna limit ourselves, that's the choice we're making. It's fact, but they can't, but, but, when you go and look legally, you will probably find that they can bring in any municipality they want and submit it. No different than if they picked one and wanted to change it. Nothing is a hundred percent approved. This is just getting them closer to. And nonetheless, all the energy things will slow some people down. Just as some plans, and even asking a question of, do I have to have the alcove and the porch and that type of stuff? Changes it, it does. So unless that's asterked in without a plan, you're gonna have a building inspector going, oh, I can't handle it, where's the, where's the-
Well, that actually goes to more of the one question I really had. Is when individual approval elements, such as color matching versus primary, fire sprinklers, et cetera, you know, water heater, when are these elements considered and essentially approved if they are some sort of variation from what is being pre-approved? And does this reconsideration have an additional cost or burden on the constituent?
I think it depends on how much is being actually changed. With the, with the water heater thing, I'm not really sure. I mean, like, let's say, for example, somebody, um, wanted to say, hey, I don't wanna have a porch that big, and they're looking at these plans, well, I mean, this is the options that we have. If, if, if somebody really pushed it, like, hey, I don't really wanna have a porch that big, I, I mean, I think there would be, probably wouldn't be as pre-approved then, because there would be a little bit more, there might be more involved from building division in terms of looking at it, if, you know, structurally, if the porch was smaller or larger or whatnot.
But they would essentially be submitting their own alternate, alternative plans, essentially.
Yeah, which are technically not pre-approved.
Okay, thank you, perfect.
Let me just speak to that process a little bit, because there are, when we, especially when we talk about the porch. When we talk about options in there, the optional entries, the optional porches, the details that are included on that, those are all built into the approved set. So as, when, on the cover sheet of this, we'll have spots for, for applicants to indicate, here are the colors, here's the materials I'm using. Yeah, they're gonna have to, you know, your, your planner, your building official, when they look at the site, they're also gonna verify that, that, oh, yeah, he, you know, this was only gonna allow a thirty-five pound per square foot roof. These guys who render that were fine, whatever they chose. Some very minor things like that, that's internal to their, just the, the intake review process. Same with the colors. But when we talk about the options and porch, no porch, that's all built in there. It's just a checkbox, say, we're doing this one or this one, so that the inspector knows what options are included that he's looking at and what are permitted. So that, i- it's not a new process, it is all hopefully built in and runs efficiently.
I have a question for Craig. If I heard you right, you said a program through June of twenty-six? Well, so that's nine months from now. Let's say somebody wanted to submit plans right away, you did two a month, that's eighteen houses. What, what do you estimate per house is that four hundred and fifty thousand going to?
The plans last for years.
So-
Correct.
You just make the plans.
Right, well, who, who keeps track of that four hundred and fifty thousand that stays only for this program? And how, how do you bill? And how do other cities build on that?
No, so I think where you're a little confused, so a portion of the four hundred and fifty thousand is going to pay for these plans.
Correct.
Correct.
He said it was only a couple thousand a thing.
No, that's like in the future.
For the code update, you know, we're much more than a couple- I have to promise these plans for a city for years, I, I'm so tired of it now.
So most of the money's going to you?
And I wish that was the case, too.
Well, I know it's going for inspectors' time and things like that.
Here, here's one quick question. Greg, how many properties ballpark would you say are eligible for this program? I know, I know, I'm-
That's a little tough, I mean, I would, I would think that a vast majority of homes that have, I mean, and most of our stuff's garage conversions anyway. Um, I would say a vast majority could, could apply for this program.
So the, the four fifty K that goes to plans, I don't know what's gonna happen with any remainder after we pay off R R M for what they're designing. But the four fifty K these plans, the way to look at it, is they are pre-approved through twenty-twenty-seven, minus any code change. They can be applied over thousands of properties. So it's not that the plan ends when the funds run out. The, the plans that are being designed from the program continue on.
Essentially, we have to use the money by that date.
Yeah, and also we have to provide the, uh, grant, the invoices to the, uh, the invoices.
And if I may, um, if the program is popular, then we're gonna go back to council and ask for funds to, to do the code updates, so then that would, would be the process. So we're hoping that this program takes off, and then council would bless, if it's the three thousand per, per construction document, then we'd be able to update those with the new code change when, when that occurs.
Yeah, I was just asking, because I just wanted to know where the money's going, because I wonder who's driving that Porsche out there. Just kidding, just kidding.
I, I will tell you, the, the adoption rate is- I, I will tell you, the, the adoption rate has gone from the other jurisdictions I've done, has ranged from twenty to about two hundred a year, depending on the community. I haven't heard any less than twenty and that's probably six years in. So they're, they get pretty good use. And, and you've got the, the, the conversion for the garages included in there. I mean, literally, at least seventy-five percent of your residential parcels could utilize this.
Well, thank you.
I have one more quick follow-up for Greg. What's the, knowing just not about it, funding and everything, what's the best resource for the public to follow along with the Prado program? To be aware, is it?
Oh, it'd be either coming to the building counter and talking to us or looking at our website.
Thank you.
There, there is a page on the website that was part of that grant money to, to get up there. And, uh, and to keep people informed and to keep up to date on the progress. And as documents prepared, I don't, I haven't looked at it personally. I'm not the guy who prepares that, but these might already be up there. But as information comes out, these meetings I'm sure are posted on there that, hey, we're gonna be talking about ADUs. That's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Resim. So, any other questions for staff before we open it up to public comment? No? Okay. We will go ahead and open it up to public comment.
Nick Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I've been in rental business for thirty years, forty years. What drives the ability, the whole purpose of the, the intent of the ADU is to have something that was affordable and you can rent it and help housing. Give as many options upfront as possible. From a construction standpoint, the porches are expensive. And in most areas, they're gonna be in the backyard of the alley. It's not gonna be aesthetically visible to the public. So you wanna have an option with the porch, without the porch, because I would rather spend money on my interior unit than on a porch that's probably not gonna be used. State law dictates right now, and you can look up, that technically you have to accept any approved municipal or county program. The differential, California Building Code is California Building Code applies to all of California. So that's not gonna change. What's gonna change are things that you have to do in the locality for like alluvial soils, compaction, which brings me to a question is, are you gonna permit on the standalones oversized foundations? Because there're gonna be some properties where you can't get heavy equipment in there. And so you're not gonna be able to excavate out four feet and recompact. So it's critical to have an oversized, um, foundation so that you can meet the requirements and not, and not have a plan that's beautiful, but nobody can build on it. It's great that you're doing the garages because that's absent in most communities. Most communities don't have a preapproved ADU program for garages. They have these standalones that we see here. And this is pretty generic. I've, I've seen this. I've reviewed them. I've gone to the state and lobbied for this on behalf of Rental Property Association that I've been part of. You, the electric, there's exceptions for everything. So if your building doesn't have a certain demand, you're excluded from the solar requirement. You're excluded from the electric requirement. Have the option for the gas, have the option for the electric. Have the option for the porch, have the option for no porch. Have the option, you know, for the colors and, and, and items. But, but the reality is, is if somebody comes with the preapproved California prefab, you gotta take it. And you have no control over it. You don't have no control over the architect, the visual, none of that stuff. If they come in and they bring it in, all they gotta need is the soils for the, for the foundation. So, so be as liberal as you can if you really want this to effectuate and be used in the community. Santa Maria is doing over four hundred ADUs. Make a couple of calls and find out how and why they've been so successful in that program. Four hundred. We didn't, we had, I think, three or four units prior to this new development being developed. And they had four hundred ADUs last year, over four hundred, and, and over four hundred the previous year to that. And, and so what drives that, I can tell you, I, is the flexibility. You, you have to have options. So as many options that you can put into a preapproved plan, the more utilization of the plan you're gonna, you're gonna see. Because as I think the consultant was saying, you have this checkoff, right? I want this porch. I don't want this porch. I want electric. I don't want electric. A, a reality is Santa Barbara had put in an all-electric mandate, the city of Santa Barbara. They clawed back that mandate through lit, because of litigation and because of no capacity. And part of the litigation, I believe, was because of no capacity. You're gonna reach a point where you just can't meet the electrical demand on the electrical grid and on the infrastructure that exists. And then you're gonna have somebody wanna come in and put in an ADU and there's no capacity. And so then you're gonna tell them, oh, you gotta put in a transformer for fifty thousand dollars, which could be the cost of the ADU. It's not gonna happen. So you, you need to take these into consideration and understand, as much as we wanna control the design, you have individuals that are able to come in with prefab approved by the state. And all the planning is gonna, or the building is gonna be able to do is to see if the foundation is gonna need this, those requirements and the tie-ins to the, into the utilities. Utilities are big because some of the costs for utilities, for a new meter, for an upgraded panel, for new electric, those are very, very expensive. So you want as much as possible to have those, also those demands, the, the flow calculations, the electrical calculations built into the plans so that somebody doesn't come in and say, yeah, I'm gonna do this preapproved plan. And then find out they have to upgrade from a hundred amp to a two hundred amp. They gotta run a new line. Or they gotta go from a three-quarter water meter to a one-inch water meter and, and, and that, that's ten, you know. Those costs quickly add up and then they make the program useless. Because it becomes too costly to do. So as much flexibility that you can do would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria Guinica. I'm a resident, but I'm also a real estate broker in town. We've been waiting, when I say we, the real estate community has been waiting for this ADU program. We were promised this like five years ago and I'm glad to finally see it here. One thing that concerns me and the previous speaker, he was mistaken. Santa Maria, and I got this data today because I attended a meeting. Santa Maria has built over two thousand ADUs. Santa Barbara, a thousand. Santa Barbara County, a thousand. City of Santa Barbara, point nine. Goleta, didn't even make the mark. Guadalupe, I don't even know what. Lompoc, we're probably at less than a hundred. So who is building these ADUs? What do real estate agencies, what do I see as a professional? It's your entry-level homeowners that have some equity and are looking for that residual income or to move in that, um, their son, daughter, their parents. So when I see, when I see these drawings, they're not realistic. We want them to be nice looking. We, we, we want, I mean, they're beautiful, don't get me wrong. But that is not the reality of who's gonna be building these ADUs. You want this program to be successful, you have to have different options for the different community members. A lot of the garages here in town that are in the alley, they have no setbacks. Some of them are adjacent to the next property. Okay? So we have to really, I don't know, um, the firm that did these drawings, I don't know if they actually went out into our community and looked at our alleys, looked at the way. Because as you all know, Lompoc, we have different areas. Some have alley access, some don't. Some we have detached garages. We have some that are attached garages. And I'm sitting here thinking, beautiful drawings, beautiful concept, but it's not practical. It's not, it's not gonna be practical for your consumer out there. And this program's gonna fail. It's gonna fail, period. When you, if you give someone an option, the porches alone are, in my opinion, are a big issue because of setbacks. Also, some of the designs, beautiful, but a lot of our, a lot of our garages are stucco. And they're gonna remain stucco. And, uh, uh, it's composition roofing. They're gonna remain composition roofing. It's a cost-effective project in order for the homeowner to make it happen. Santa Maria is building ADUs at forty, fifty thousand, converting garages at forty, fifty thousand a unit. Santa Barbara, two hundred thousand. Okay, so as, uh, and I had talked to Kristi Alarcon about this when she first mentioned that this was gonna happen. And I begged her, go look at Santa Maria, look what they're doing. Let's be realistic about this. If you're gonna spend the money, give us different options. Because this, I can tell you, when some, if, if a regular entry-level homeowner was to walk in and see, God, I have to do all this? When in their mind, what they're seeing and what's actually happening out there is they're just converting the whole inside of the existing garage, keeping the stucco, the composition roofing. So go visit, call Santa Maria, ask them what's working for you. It's a shame that the city of Lompoc has not gone on this. I mean, I had clients that took him a year to get, uh, an ADU approved. That's when the law states that it should be no more than sixty days. So the whole point about getting this grant, the whole point about having this program was to expedite things. But at the same time, what I'm asking of you is to be realistic as to who, who are we, who's gonna be using and who's gonna be doing these ADUs. And I'm telling you, people who are building the ADUs are your entry-level homeowners. You're not gonna see these in your six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar homes. You're gonna see these projects in the five hundred thousand dollar homes or people who bought them for two hundred thousand. Now they have some equity and are able to, to tap into that equity. So please be conscientious of who you are targeting with these plans. I'm asking for you to go out there, drive the neighborhoods. I have clients who have done ADUs, have done a great job at them. You feel free to contact me and I can take you and even have you go inside and take a look at them. They're beautiful, but obviously they don't look like this, but they look like what? And it, and because they're keeping the garage almost the same, it's not really changing the neighborhood. Does that make sense? The, the garage still looks like the, you know, from the outside, like the garage. So it's not, it's, it's not really changing the, the way the neighborhood looks. Also, a lot, I see a lot of these drawings are standalone ADUs. And half of these ADUs that are being done, especially in Santa Maria, they're all attached to the home. So just be conscientious. I plead with you, be conscientious, keep it open. If we're able to, the consumer's able to use other ADU, uh, other, uh, approved ADUs throughout the state, let's, let's just broaden up the spectrum, yes.
If you wouldn't mind, could you give some details in terms of what are some of the options that you feel like are missing from these plans specifically?
Well, like I just stated, um, I have about ten clients who have done ADUs in the city of Lompoc. And I'm telling you, the facade of the ADU, it looks like it was never changed, like the original. So it's not, so when I see plans like this, it's not gonna happen. This.
Like specifically the siding?
So for example, the siding, they're keeping the stucco.
You're, you're talking about garage conversions?
Garage conversions.
That's, that's a difference, conversion versus a new construction.
But even the standalone, they're, they're making it to match the rest of the house. Does that make sense? So, so, so if I, so my, a lot of, some of my clients, when they build their standalone, they're doing stucco. They're not doing a special siding. They're not adding the decorative rocks, you know, or the facade brick. They're not doing that. They're not doing porches. A lot of this is, this is very fancy.
But the option is not to have a porch, not to have the tile. And if you have a stucco home, I'm sure there, there's a stucco home in the plans. So, and you can match the same color.
Yeah, I, I think it was actually my underst, well, correct me, sir, if I'm, if I'm misunderstanding, but I believe that there was some aesthetic variability, yes, some options that, that you may not. Now, I, I guess I didn't answer that or ask that question earlier. But like to what level are we able to, like, the options? Uh, for example, on eight thirty-seven where it talks about, you know, A, B, and C, the tile roof, the wood look, fascia accents, the stucco. Are those like mandatory? Like you must choose from those? Or those are options that stylistically might, might look best?
The intent of that is to, to indicate that you could do any of that. That is, if you.
Excuse me.
Can we have you speak into the microphone, please?
We are in the public, um, hearing section for the community. I would suggest finishing it up and then coming back.
So, so one thing that a lot of people from Lompoc have complained throughout the years is Lompoc has never really been planned. What are we supposed to look like, right? Like Santa Barbara has your Spanish style, so they kept all their commercial buildings, you know, new construction to look Spanish. And one thing I hear about Lompoc is what, what, what is our style? Cause we're at, you know, we have different things. So the reality is that I wanna just re-focus on was a lot of these people who, the, the consumer who's doing these entry-level ADUs, they're keeping the same style as the current home. Same, same style. So when you drive through these neighborhoods, you can't even tell there's an ADU there unless you really focus. But otherwise you cannot tell. And that was also part of the whole ADU thing, right? Not to really drastically change neighborhoods per se and for it to kind of blend in. And, and, and looking at these plans, they do not, this is not Lompoc. And this is not what, what our city looks like or what the current ADUs or people who are doing the ADUs look. But the most important thing is cost-effective and have the options. So if you can incorporate more options to kind of look what our city is actually, to complement our city and what is actually happening, that would be great. That's my suggestion, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Holloway, Lompoc. There's no, there's no, uh, heating in the whole thing. You don't have any place to put the heater in. You know, uh, if you build them, if you're gonna go from scratch and you're gonna build a separate each, each unit, uh, you're gonna have to put, there's enough room where the water heater goes. If you take the water heater out and put an on-demand water heater uh, on the outside of the building, which is normally where they go, because you gotta run a van out through. Now, I'm talking about the gas, you know. It's, uh, you know, Lompoc, if, if too many people on the south side, especially if they start building ADUs and they go all electric, they'll have to start from Ocean Avenue and move all of the transformers up all the way clear to the end of the block. Because they just, you know, right now it's just for normal people. If, if three or four people on my, in my street there, they wanna have a Tesla and they wanna put a charging station in, the electric department's gonna have to go down to Ocean Avenue on the alley, on the what, on the south side of the thing and change all of the transformers all the way up there, or else we're all gonna be brown. I'm chairman of the Utility Commission and we've been working on that a lot. Also, uh, I wanna know, do, if I buy one, I mean, if I get a permit for one and I pay the permit fees for all the rest of them, I only have to get one plan, is that gonna go against the money that you guys are putting out? Cause I'd like to build three of them. So I need to, that's just for you guys to discuss, but that's, that's what I wanted to know. And as far as, uh, as far as, uh, you know, the exterior of all of your places, if somebody puts it in the garage, if somebody puts it in the garage, you can't change the whole damn house, you know? I mean, you're going to have to keep the stucco on there. If you build it from the ground up, you can put whatever you want on there. You know, you can put siding, you can put anything, you know? I mean, you know, if you're going to build them separate, each one of them, well, you can put the porch on if you want, if you don't want, you don't have to. You can just put a thing sticking over the door, you know? That's the way they do it all the time, so, thank you.
Thank you. So like, we'll go ahead and close public comment and we'll invite Mr. Russell back up.
Yeah, happy to come back and just respond to some of the things that came up. And, let's see, for point of clarity, we, we have garage conversions in the plans. Both two-car, in fact, three-car, two-car, one-car garage conversions that have no exterior architectural changes to them, with the exception of making sure you have a door and a window to get out of your, your bedroom, which is basic life safety. It is not dictating the change of color, materials, any detailing on the existing building, probably very similar to what the speaker had, is used to see. So those are incorporated into the plans as they, as they are now presented. I, I don't know how many homes you have in this, you know, many, many thousand homes in your community. It is impossible to represent every one of those in a set of plans like this. So what we try to do is bring forward, you know, our best foot, this is how good this, this can look. What we build into it and we're trying to, to describe that primarily the goal is, this plan has stucco, so, or this design has stucco, here's how it would apply to a house, the primary house on there that is also stucco. We have that version, we have wood-sided, we have horizontal wood siding, we have different types of porches to try to respond to the different characters of the general style. Ultimately, the specifics of the details are going to be, are going to come from the primary residents. If they don't have, if it's stucco without a tile roof, they would play, their ADU would be stucco with an asphalt shingle roof. That is integrated, matter of fact, was specifically asked by planning. Make sure you have this built into our options here, because we have a lot of those examples around here. So, I, I, what, what is intended to show the variety of opportunity is being perceived as limiting and it is not as what the intent is, it was just the opposite, is we can accommodate to match any, any home that's out there, so that it's not. So hopefully that clarifies some of those things.
Thank you for that.
Let's go with.
Thank you for that. I hope that any constituents that may have misinterpreted any of that were able to catch that, because that was clarifying, so thank you.
Are there wall heaters in most of them?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the heating question. There, we typically use mini-spits. They're, they're the most cost-effective, most energy-efficient way to provide heating and in that case, cooling in, in small units. It's hands-down beats everything out on the market today.
Mr. Stone?
Yes, I just want to also address the comment regarding the roof, the porch, the size of the porch. And I wanted to also confirm, would it be an option to have a smaller porch instead of the size they have? As depicted in here, would that, is that something that could be an option? I know our design guidelines do, the, the requirements for ADUs is pretty limiting, but one of the things we do have in our design guidelines is basically just a, a covered area for where the primary entrance is, and that's been reflected with these porches. But I just wanted to see if, as an option, if you could have a smaller porch.
In simple terms, yes, these are very small, simple porches for the most part. I think our structure's going to be very limited. So, this will bump up against to what your building official wants to deal with. How many options, you know, do we want to build into this that they have to, to keep track of? But we can absolutely, I, I don't think it really affects the design from a plan set or a structure to reduce the depth of it. You want to actually make it larger in some configuration, then that's impactful to me. But to just say it's not going to be this deep, I don't know that that, I think that could be accommodated.
Would we be able, I'm sorry, would we be able to request a pre-approval of some variable range so people can minimize or maximize in this program? I mean, just so they have that set range? I mean, I'm not sure what we're saying are the limiting factors to the porches here.
At least our design guidelines requires a, let me double-check, I believe it's eighteen inches.
And that's minimum, is what you're saying?
Yes, minimum.
Eighteen inches, minimum.
Let me double-check.
But we could potentially pre-approve up to a maximum amount, right? So to build in that pre-permissive variability? I wasn't so much requesting for an exact answer on the size. I'm just thinking, can we have a pre-approval variable range going from the minimum up to whatever building determines is a maximum? So constituents can just say, "I want X feet," which is in that range? Or is that not a realistic thing?
I guess I'm leaning towards you if we could have that option, to, to address that. I guess I'm, wanted to see if we, if that's a possibility, is an option to address his comment?
Absolutely, we, we've done some crazy variables in some of these, which adds a lot of complexity for a lot of people. But when we talk about something simple like the porch, I, I would recommend setting a minimum of whatever the design guidelines, I believe it was eighteen inches. We have, we do have the option for no porch, at which time you would have to have some sort of covering, which we provide a detail that is complementary to the design, but isn't a big porch, it's just a thing that, you know, keeps the, keeps the rain off you. And then up to whatever you guys decide is maximum. I think our current design is effective five feet. I mean, it's intended to be a usable space. And that's whatever our design for right now.
Mr. Bridge, you had a comment?
I'm confused. I'm slightly confused about this design requirement of eighteen inches. So it's eighteen inches if we have a porch, but if not, we can have zero? Well, what if I don't call it a porch? Like, can it be six and a half inches? Can it be a?
You'd have the overhang requirement.
I just heard them say there's a variation for no porch or overhang or anything, or is there? Out of minimum, there's always that overhang at eighteen inches.
I think the overhang is more like an awning, like just for simple terms.
That's fine, but you can't have flush, so there's no flush design?
Is no flush, per your design guidelines that part out.
So in my garage, I guess there's not really a design requirement to have to put the eighteen inches on a porch, then?
We don't speak to the exterior design of the garages in our plans. They're just life, safety, let's make sure we can enclose the space and.
So then the trick is to build the garage first and then convert it to an AD.
No question for Greg. On the south side, there's a, a lot of single-family garages on the alley with no setback? They wouldn't be eligible to convert those?
No, you can still convert them, they're existing structures. You can still convert a existing structure into an ADU. Existing garage into an ADU.
Seventy, eighty years ago, they didn't build a lot of things above ground level. Do you go out and see if the, the garage floods every year? Were you going to make them raise, raise the footing, the floor, or how's that going to be handled? So there's not problems for the next owner ten years later?
For, for, yeah.
For the old garages, I mean, some of them are below grade of the alley.
That I would leave up to the building division in terms of how they, how, would meet building code in terms of those existing structures. I, I'm not sure how building code looks at that.
So their entry door is going to be right on the alley, then?
Well, isn't that, if it's, that's their garage, then that's their garage? I mean, if their original plan designed their garage in the back, so to the point of what he's saying, where we go full-blown, didn't I just get told where we started this meeting? Where, no, building won't review anything and there's, we're, we're pre-approving everything, but now we're saying there's a flooding problem, but building code will look at that? And this is really seeming like a if-this, then-that, it doesn't actually add up. No, nothing against the plans. The logic here that we seem to be putting ourselves in a box that doesn't really.
Sort of comes back to the Realtor who spoke that you're not going to convert all these garages sitting on the alley. It's going to look terrible.
But those are already existing, so you're, you don't have any, they don't have, these plans don't have any requirements for the exterior.
So is it mandated that we have to do conversions and standalone? Or can you eliminate the conversions unless they meet your setbacks? Is that up to the city, or is that the state telling you what to do?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
He, he's wondering, I think, if you can restrict conversions of garages that don't have setbacks? Is that correct?
I don't, I don't think we can do that.
No, I, I think the state mandates, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Greg, I don't know if you can answer, there was a comment about accepting oversized footings due to, for, to allow the heavy equipment?
Yeah, I, I can't comment on oversized footings. Is that your question?
Was it the concern with regards to the potential geology, seismology of some sites that maybe could not fit with these plans because soil type doesn't work in a site-specific? Which again goes to Brandon's comment about, are we restricting plans rather than expediting? But I think that was the issue. Was there maybe concerns of some of these plans on specific parcels in the city that have seismic or geological?
Looks like Mr. Russell might have an answer.
I feel like I should stand here and hang out to help with some of these things. Most cities, and I believe Long Poak has too, they are waiving a soils report requirement for these, these small buildings. And we're, we utilize a, a, basically a code minimum bearing capacity for the soil, which is built into our, into the code, which then drives the size of the footings. And then in lieu of the, what you might see around here of overexcavation and recompaction and import of non-expansive soils, all these, these pretty expensive things. Soils engineers, the guys make the money, by the way, not us architects, is, is, is the idea that you're, you're going to have to have a compaction test at the bottom of the footing to verify that you've got that, but I think that's where the building official has landed on how to do this. This, those types of things are at the discretion of the building official and they're program-wide. It's not going to be on a, we'll decide on this lot or that lot, it's a program-wide approach to that. And some jurisdictions have zones where of known problems, like you have near the beach, done stuff in Oceano, there's liquefaction down there. That's a known issue area, and so that is set apart from that non, you know, no soils requirement. But I don't think we've identified any here, I'd have to, we're not kind of at that stage yet with the building official. But as a blanket idea, you would not have to deal with sort of the more typical soil impacts. And a couple more bars in the footing, a little deeper, but nothing like to do soil protection.
Thank you.
Greg, is there, oh, sorry.
Any other questions?
Just following up on that, is there any anticipation, just to be thorough, of either doing a, or referring to a city soil study? Or is this, are we sort of approaching this as caveat emptor of the individual who decides to build? Like basically, are, since the soil issue is raised and Mr. Russell stated, certain cities have carve-out regions, and again, I'm not trying to carve anything out by any means, but are we going, is there any consideration in the Pradu program to look at any soil studies or anything as a concern with blanket approve, pre-approval of these plans? Do you follow what I'm saying there?
If I may, real quick, Greg. I'll double-check with our building official and then have Greg, but we had a meeting about this today that then that the city does have a waiver on one-story units for soils. So I don't want to get specific, but there is a program through the city currently on the one-story ADUs, that then that we have a waiver for, for the soils reports. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No, okay, thank you, Mr. Russell. So was there anything specific you wanted to add to this approval? No, okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, sorry, I was trying to find the recommended motion here. But I'll motion to approve the Long Poak permit-ready ADU Pradu program review. Did it work? There we go. Okay, we'll vote now. Approved five oh, okay. Next, we will move on to oral communications. Again, this is an opportunity to address items not on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Long Poak. I just realized you just said "not on the agenda," and I was just kind of, have a final statement. This has been something that's, I think the community has waited for. This will facilitate the production, I believe, of a significant amount of affordable housing. If we can keep costs down, then individuals such as myself can afford to rent units at a lower price. Despite all the information and noise that you hear out there, which drives my rents are my cost. And when I'm able to limit my costs, I'm able to limit my rents. And that's the true rent control that we should have, is we need to start figuring out ways to produce housing at a less expensive cost. And so going back, as, as I stated earlier, anything that, that the planning commission can do that helps mitigate costs to produce housing helps limit the cost of the rents that are charged. So I'm very thankful to all of you for dedicating the time and to the consultants and the staff for bringing a project like this forward and initiating it. And I look forward it to being available, and when it is, I will utilize it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no one else is standing, so we will go ahead and close oral communications. Any written communications?
No.
Any, there's no new business, any director-staff communications?
I just want to mention that the safety element that was recommended approval from planning commission went before city council on September second and was adopted by city council.
Thank you. And then any commissioner requests? One thing I wanted to mention, I noticed we talk over each other a lot. Is there any way, like our old system, where we can press a button, where we know someone wants to speak and then we can address that person to speak?
I guess we can look into that, I'm not sure, I thought there, isn't there little buttons for lights up there?
We have a section in the upper left that has respect, or request to speak list in queue. I don't know if that's relating to us or relating to the floor, I'm not sure. Just stating that, sorry.
Yeah, that's relating to the, to the dais, so it would be up to the chair to, it would light on the, then the screen, and then the commissioners would wait to be called on. And so it'd be up to the chair to ask a certain commissioner, it's time to speak.
Okay, and how are they able to request to speak on their screens? If you click make motion? No, it's just under motion made by, but nothing is popping up under request to speak list.
Chairman, we can work with staff to see, there should be a way for you to be able to control it.
Okay, yes, if we can get that working, please. And then, let me see, okay, so no other commission requests. So I'm gonna motion to adjourn this meeting to a regular meeting at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, October 8th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, we'll vote. Perfect, approved five-zero, we are adjourned to a regular meeting at 6:30 PM on October 8th, 2025.